Honorable members of the House of Representatives, today is the fourth Monday of July 2024. The Constitution mandates that Congress convenes once every year on the fourth Monday of July to commence its regular session. I hereby call the third regular session of the 19th Congress to order. All rise for the singing of the Philippine national anthem to be led by the Sinirangan Chamber Singers. Please remain standing for the doxology to be sung by the I Love Tacloban Quartet. The Chair would like to address this august chamber. Please take your seats. Honorable Deputy Speakers, Majority Leader, Minority Leader, Distinguished Colleagues, Ladies and Gentlemen, United for a Better Future, Building a Stronger Philippines for All. I quote: "Life denies its best to people who will not give their all to it. Success does not come to the holdouts. The individual who achieves is the one who believes he can and throws himself into reaching his goal." Norman Vincent P. Peirre. In 2022, when you installed me as Speaker of this House of Representatives, we were emerging from a multitude of unprecedented challenges. I stood before you then with the assurance that no one gets left behind and that only fairness and equitable distribution of resources for the simultaneous development of all regions shall permeate within the halls of Congress. Our central theme upon the assumption of our duty was unity and solidarity, a much-needed solution to a fragmented Filipino society hounded by the debilitating impacts of the pandemic, political divisiveness, threats to our sovereignty, and global conflicts. The odds were stacked against us and we were confronted with expectations to deliver beyond our imagination. Given the challenges the 19th Congress ushered in a new era of legislative excellence, I have been privileged to win the support of a substantial majority of honored men and women who now compromise the House of Representatives. Your hard work and dedication greatly contributed to the success of the first and second regular sessions. Together, we have forged a path that sets aside pride, ambitions, differences, and self-interest, but puts ahead perseverance, understanding, diplomacy, and diligence. As we open the third regular session of the 19th Congress, we ride on the momentum of our significant achievements of the first and regular sessions. Our unwavering commitment to unity and progress has paved the way for transformative laws that uplift and empower every Filipino. Our mission is clear: Build a Philippines where every citizen can live with dignity, opportunity, and hope. We are dedicated to creating a Philippines where dreams can be achieved and where every Filipino feels valued and supported. Together, we continue to build a brighter and more prosperous future for all. Ladies and gentlemen, from the opening of the first regular session on July 25, 2022, to this date, the House of Representatives has attended to a total of 12,405 legislative measures consisting of 10,565 House bills, 1,839 resolutions, and one petition. Out of these numbers, 4,125 measures were processed within a span of 149 session days or an average of 28 measures processed per session day. In the regular session alone, a total of 58 Republic Acts were enacted, a result of your outstanding consensus-building and resolute efforts to accomplish the tasks at hand. If we include the first regular session, the House has been instrumental in the swift passage of 77 laws, many of which are of national importance. These include the recently signed two landmark legislations: Republic Act Number 12009 or the New Government Procurement Act, which introduces crucial reforms that safeguard public funds, eliminate corruption, and foster a more competitive and fair procurement environment; and Republic Act Number 12010 or the Anti-Financial Accounts Scamming Act, which strengthens our financial system by preventing fraud and promoting trust among consumers, businesses, and investors. Worth noting also is Republic Act Number 11976 or the Ease of Paying Taxes Act, which instilled optimism among taxpayers who long for a more streamlined process in dealing with tax-related intricacies and provides a positive move towards improving tax compliance. Laws aiming to promote economic development such as the Mahalika Investment Fund Act of 2023, RA 11954, Extending the Availment of Tax Amnesty, RA 11956, One Town One Project Philippines Act, RA 11960, RABAO Para Sabayan Act, RA 11962, Public-Private Partnership Code of the Philippines, RA 11966, Internet Transactions Act of 2023, RA 11967, and Tatak Pimnoe Proudly Filipino Act, RA 1191, will generate and preserve and grow national wealth, drive inclusive local economic activity, ensure equitable employment, opportunities for all, encourage private enterprise, and provide incentives to investors, boost and maintain a vigorous electronic commerce environment and promote globally competitive Filipino products and services. We likewise take great pride in our endeavors to protect the environment and ensure sustainable development as demonstrated by the enactment of RA 11995 or the Philippine Ecosystem and Natural Capital Accounting Systems, the PNCAS Act. The House of Representatives also gave significant attention to education and supported the passage of RA 12006 or the Free College Entrance Examinations Act, RA 11984 or the No Permit, No Exam Prohibition Act, and RA 11997 or the Kabalikat sa Pagtuturo Act. Out of the 17 priority measures identified by the President, in his 2023 State of the Nation address, five have been enacted into laws: One bicameral report ratified and presently under enrollment process; another one under deliberation in the bicameral conference committee; and 10 remaining measures have been approved on third and final reading by the House with one as early as November 2022. This amounts to a 100% approval on third and final reading by this august chamber of the 2023 Sona Priorities. We have done our homework. We address concerns on food, security, climate change, social protection, tourism, public health, public order, safety, among others. Our accomplishments reflect our proactive stance in catering to the needs of the people by passing these much-needed legislation that are tuned to the Philippine Development Plan and the eight-point socio-economic agenda under the medium-term fiscal framework of the President. In fact, the fruits of our overarching development agenda initiatives for the past two years are now slowly being felt across the nation. From the third quarter of 2022 to the first quarter of 2024, the Philippine economy experienced an average growth of 6.1%. For the first quarter of 2024 alone, the Philippine economy outperformed Indonesia at 5.1%, Malaysia at 4.2%, Singapore at 2.7%, and Thailand at 1.5%. In May of this year, the National Economic and Development Authority stated that the country's target growth rate of 6% to 7% this year is achievable with implementation of appropriate government policies. As a result, the country is expected to continue outperforming most emerging economies and expand further to a range of 6.5% to 7.5% in 2025. This is not far from the 6.2 economic growth projections for the Philippines in 2025 by key international financial institutions such as the International Monetary Fund at 6.2%, the Asian Development Bank at 6.1%, and the World Bank at 5.9%. I believe, dear colleagues, that policies have all been put in place and the gains of competent, focused, and thorough legislative process are now bringing significant improvements to our economy. In June of this year, Pitch Ratings, a recognized credit rating company, affirmed the country's investment-grade long-term foreign currency trading at a triple B rating with a stable outlook. This indicates the country's robust medium-term growth and suggests a reduced credit risk. It also states that our ability to meet financial obligations is sufficient. This can be attributed in part to the pursuit of priorities such as the Build Better More Infrastructure Program and the investments in public-private partnerships. In light of the recent approval on third and final reading of the amendments to the Rice Tarification Law, which seeks to remedy the widening gap between rice retail and farm gate prices, the House of Representatives welcomes and fully supports the move of the President to reduce the tariff on imported rice from 35% to 15% through the issuance of Executive Order Number 62. May I just add that in conjunction with the lowering of rice tariffs for the benefit of Filipino consumers, we will strive to provide all necessary infrastructure, technological, and financial support to increase the productivity and income of all our farmers. By augmenting the rice supply and managing prices, rice becomes more affordable and thus accessible to all Filipinos. Also, our diplomatic relations and alliances with other countries have also been at an all-time high. In Tokyo last June, the House leadership met with Speaker Fukushiro Nukaga of Japan and other Japanese lawmakers to enhance the defense and security cooperation between our countries. During the meeting, we made a firm commitment to expand the trilateral cooperation among the Philippines, Japan, and the United States. We also addressed the matter of fair access to Philippine agricultural products by reviewing the Philippine-Japan Economic Partnership Agreement, assistance for infrastructure projects through the Official Development Assistance, the ODA, protection of the rights of overseas Filipino workers, and Japanese investments. This collaboration serves to fortify our bilateral relations and the strategic partnership. In response to the most current and pressing issues, we have reiterated our relentless fight against criminal activities, particularly in the operation of illegitimate Philippine offshore gaming operators, which undermines the integrity of our legal and regulatory framework. We are also looking into the illegal drug trade to intensify our campaign against the proliferation of these substances. Comprehensive congressional investigations on pogo and illegal drugs are underway to identify and prosecute the perpetrators to the fullest extent of the law. The House likewise aim to safeguard the purchasing power of our countrymen by keeping inflation under control and reducing electricity cost. The Philippine Statistics Authority reported that inflation in June decelerated to 3.7% compared to 3.9% in May due to lower energy and transport costs. The amendment to the Electric Power Industry Reform Act, the IPIRA, which we must finish in December, is expected to further ease inflation. On health, a mega-13-story hemodialysis facility will soon rise at the National Kidney and Transplant Institute to serve every Filipino seeking treatment for free. A spark... This is a part of the integral legacy specialty hospital projects of the President. Undoubtedly, the successful outcome of all our initiatives would not have been possible without the exceptional synchronization between the workings of the leaders of the House and our counterparts in the Senate. To ensure a seamless legislative flow, both Houses agree that our priorities must align with the efforts of the administration of President Marcos Jr. and his agenda for prosperity and the Baguio Pilipinas brand of governance. The existence of this dynamic relation helps formulate and implement government programs efficiently and more effectively. We at the House of Representatives stand united with the President in his desire to advance the legislative initiatives that will shape the nation's path forward. This is a time for unity and we fully support the President. Thus, on June 25, 2024, the House and Senate leadership attended the fifth Legislative Executive Development Advisory Council, the LEDAC meeting led by no less than President Marcos Jr., wherein we committed to prioritize the passage of 28 bills under the common legislative agenda before the end of the 19th Congress. Among the bills on the priority list are the Anti-Agriculture Economic Sabotage Act, the Philippine Self-Reliance Defense Posture Program Act, the Philippine Maritime Zones Act, Amendments to the Right of Way Act, Amendments to the Electric Power Industry Reform Act, or IPIRA, the Create More Act, VAT on Digital Transactions, and our proposal on the reforms in the Philippine capital markets. More importantly, the LEDAC agreed to include the Archipelagic Sea Lanes Act in the top priority list to strengthen the country's sovereignty over its archipelagic waters and maritime resources. In addition, we had decided to include five vital measures to the present LEDAC priority list, which brings to 64 the total number of LEDAC priority measures from the current number of 59. And these include, aside from the Archipelagic Sea Lanes Act and the reforms in the Philippine capital market I mentioned earlier, number one: Amendments to the Foreign Investors Long-Term Lease Act, number two: Amendments to the Agrarian Reform Law, and number three: Amendments to the Rice Tarification Law. Of equal importance are affordable housing, education, agriculture, welfare programs, and employment generation, which we aim to fund by approving the proposed 6.352 trillion 2025 general appropriations bill before the session adjourns in September. We have to continue building roads, highways, ports, school buildings, and climate change-proof structures to maintain and expand economic growth. Progress has to reach the remotest community. Today, I emphasize our commitment to pass the remaining priority bills before the end of the third regular session. We are ready and equally determined to ensure that these critical measures are enacted to support our nation's progress and development. For this purpose, I express no less than your usual cooperation and swift action. Esteemed colleagues, this third regular session signifies a distinct period for everyone. To those holding office at third termers, this may be the final stretch to offer and deliver what is most beneficial for your constituents. To some of us, this signals another era in which we must prove ourselves worthy of another term. Regardless of the objective, we are all gunning for the same outcome: Victory for the Filipino. Our nation entered the generations to come and we continue to march toward that goal now. I urge all of you, as I have done during the opening of the two previous regular sessions, to persist in perceiving this chair's institution as a stronghold of battles won, of glory attained through ceaseless labor, day and night, relying solely on our commitment as members of the House to uplift us when our limits are being challenged. Rest not on our laurels, my dear colleagues. Our goal is to conclude the 19th Congress by upholding the principles of democracy, ushering in prosperity, and guiding a fair society. Let us give the Filipino people what they deserve and they deserve more. Please take your seats. The Secretary General will now call the role of members of the House of Representatives elected from the legislative districts apportioned among the provinces, cities, and municipalities and the party list organizations.
Role call of the members?
National Capital Region, City of Caloocan, First District, Honorable Oscar G. Malapitan. Second District, Honorable Mary Mitzi L. Kahayon Uwi. Third District, Honorable Dean Asistio. City of Las Venias, Loan District, Honorable Camille A. Villar. City of Makati, First District, Honorable Romolo Kid Peña Jr. Second District, Honorable Luis N. Campos Jr. City of Malabon, Loan District, Honorable Josephine Veronique J.R. Lacson Noel. City of Mandaluyong, Loan District, Honorable Neptali M. Gonzalez II. City of Manila, First District, Honorable Ernesto M. Dionisio Jr. Second District, Honorable Rolando M. Valeriano. Third District, Honorable Joel R. Chua. Fourth District, Honorable Edward Vera Perez Maceda. Fifth District, Honorable Erwin C. Teng. Sixth District, Honorable Benvenido M. Abante Jr. City of Marikina, First District, Honorable Marjorie Ann A. Teodoro. Second District, Honorable Stella Luz A. Kimbo. City of Montinlupa, Loan District, Honorable Jaime R. Fresnedi. City of Navotas, Loan District, Honorable Tobias Toby M. Tianco. City of Paranyake, First District, Honorable Edwin L. Olivares. Second District, Honorable Gas S. Tambuntin. Pasay City, Loan District, Honorable Antonino G. Calixto. City of Pasig, Loan District, Honorable Roman D. Romolo. Quezon City, First District, Honorable Juan Carlos Arjo C. Ataidé. Second District, Honorable Ralph Wendell P. Tulfo. Third District, Honorable Franz S. Pumaren. Fourth District, Honorable Marvin D. Rilio. Fifth District, Honorable Patrick Michael D. Vargas. Sixth District, Honorable Maria Victoria Copilar. City of San Juan, Loan District, Honorable Isabel Maria J. Zamora. City of Taguig, First Council District, Pateros, Loan District, Honorable Ricardo S. Cruz Jr. City of Taguig, Second Councilor District, Loan District, Honorable Amparo Maria J. Zamora. City of Venezuela, Second District, Honorable Eric M. Martinez. Region 1 Ilokos Region, Ilokos Norte, First District, Honorable Ferdinand Alexander A. Marcos. Second District, Honorable Angelo Marcos Barba. Ilokos Sur, First District, Honorable Ronald V. Singson. Second District, Honorable Christine Singson Mihang. La Oñon, First District, Honorable Francisco Paolo P. Ortega V. Second District, Honorable Dante S. Garcia. Pangkasinan, First District, Honorable Arthur F. Celeste. Second District, Honorable Mark O. Kwanko. Third District, Honorable Maria Rachel J. Arenas. Fourth District, Honorable Christopher V. P. de Venecia. Fifth District, Honorable Ramon N. Guico Jr. Sixth District, Honorable Marilyn L. Premisas Agabas. Region 2 Cagayan Valley, Batanes, Loan District, Honorable Siriaco B. Gato Jr. Cagayan, First District, Honorable Ramon C. Nolasco Jr. Second District, Honorable Baby Aleen Vargas Alfonso. Third District, Honorable Joseph Jojo L. Lara. Isabela, First District, Honorable Antonio Tony Pet T. Albano. Second District, Honorable Ed Christopher Esco. Third District, Honorable Ian Paul LD. Fourth District, Honorable Joseph S. Tan. Fifth District, Honorable Faustino Michael Carlos TD III. Sixth District, Honorable Faustino Ino AD V. Nueva Viscaia, Loan District, Honorable Luisa Lauren Cuarezma. Quirino, Loan District, Honorable Midi N. Kua. Region 3 Central Zone, Aurora, Loan District, Honorable Romel Rico T. Angara. Bataan, First District, Honorable Geraldine B. Roman. Second District, Honorable Albert S. Garcia. Third District, Honorable Maria Angela S. Garcia. Bulacan, First District, Honorable Dani A. Domingo. Second District, Honorable Agustina Dominique Ditsetina C. Pancho. Third District, Honorable Lorna C. Salverio. Fourth District, Honorable Lina Bell Ruth R. Villarica. Fifth District, Honorable Ambrosio C. Cruz Jr. Sixth District, Honorable Salvador A. Plato. City of San Noce del Monte, Loan District, Honorable Florida Rita P. Robes. Nueva Ecija, Fifth District, Honorable Michaela Angela B. Swan Sing. Second District, Honorable Joseph Gilbert F. Violago. Third District, Honorable Rosana Ria V. Vergara. Fourth District, Honorable Emerson V. Pasqual. Ampanga, First District, Honorable Carmelo John V. Lazatín II. Second District, Honorable Gloria Macapagalaroya. Third District, Honorable Aurelio Dong D. Gonzalez Jr. Fourth District, Honorable Anna York P. Bondo. Tarlac, First District, Honorable Jaime Eduardo Mark D. Kowanko. Second District, Honorable Christian Tel A. Yap. Third District, Honorable Noel Bong N. Rivera. Zambalas, First District, Honorable Jefferson F. Konghun. Second District, Honorable Doris E. Maniquis. Region 4 A Calabarzon, Batangas, First District, Honorable Eric R. Buahain O.L.Y. Second District, Honorable Attorney Jervil Jinky Betrix R. Luistro. Third District, Honorable Maria Clarissa V. Coliantes. Fourth District, Honorable Leanda B. Bolilia. Fifth District, Honorable Mario Vittorio Marvi A. Mariño. Cavite, First District, Honorable Ramon Jolo B. Revilia III. Second District, Honorable Lani Mercado Revilia. Third District, Honorable Adrian J. C. Advincula. Fifth District, Honorable Roy M. Loyola. Sixth District, Honorable Antonio A. Ferrer. Seventh District, Honorable Crispin Diego D. Remulia. Eighth District, Honorable Anhela Bianca D. Tolentino. Laguna, First District, Honorable Maria Renee Ann Lourdes G. Matibag. Second District, Honorable Ruth Mariano Hernandez. Third District, Honorable Loreto S. Amante. Fourth District, Honorable Maria Amina Catherine B. Agarao. City of Biñan, Loan District, Honorable Marilyn Len B. Alonte. City of Calamba, Loan District, Honorable Charisse Ann C. Hernandez. City of Santa Rosa, Loan District, Honorable Dan S. Fernandez. Quezon, First District, Honorable Wilfrido Mark M. Inverga. Second District, Honorable David J.J. C. Suarez. Third District, Honorable Renante U. Arrogancia. Fourth District, Honorable Keith Maika Tony Mike D. Eltan. Rizal, First District, Honorable Michael John R. Duavet. Second District, Honorable Emigio P. Tanwatko III. Third District, Honorable Jose Arturo S. Garcia Jr. Fourth District, Honorable Juan Fidel Felipe F. Nograles. City of Antipolo, First District, Honorable Roberto V. Puno. Second District, Honorable Romeo M. Acop. Mima Ropa Marin Duque, Loan District, Honorable Lord Alan J. Q. Velasco. Occidental Mindoro, Loan District, Honorable Leodi Odie F. Tariela. Oriental Mindoro, First District, Honorable Arnan C. Panaligan. Second District, Honorable Alfonso V. Umali Jr. Palawan, Second District, Honorable Jose C. Álvarez. Romblón, Loan District, Honorable Eleandro Jesús F. Madrona. Region 5 Bicol Region, Albay, First District, Honorable Edsel C. Lagman. Second District, Honorable Juwi Sartes Alceda. Third District, Honorable Fernando T. Cabredo. Camarines Norte, First District, Honorable Josefina B. Talliado. Second District, Honorable Rosemarie Conejos Panotes. Camarines Sur, First District, Honorable Troyoshi Anthony G. Corribata. Second District, Honorable Luis Raymond L. Ray F. Villafuerte Jr. Third District, Honorable Gabriel H. Bordado Jr. Fourth District, Honorable Arni B. Fontebelia. Fifth District, Honorable Miguel Luis R. Villafuerte. Catanduanes, Loan District, Honorable Yelohio R. Rodriguez. Masbate, First District, Honorable Ricardo T. Co. Second District, Honorable Olga Ara T. Co. Third District, Honorable Wilton Tonton T. Co. Torsocon, First District, Honorable Maria Marie Bernadette G. Escudero. Second District, Honorable Woho Portez. Region 6 Western Visayas. Aklan, First District, Honorable Carlito S. Marquez. Second District, Honorable Teodorico Jaresco Jr. Antiquilo, District, Honorable Antonio B. Legorda Jr. Apis, First District, Honorable Emmanuel Tawi Biliones. Second District, Honorable Jane T. Castro. Imaras, Loan District, Honorable Maria Lucille L. Nava M.D. Iloilo, First District, Honorable Janet L. Garin. Second District, Honorable Michael B. Goriseta. Third District, Honorable Lawrence R. Defensor. Fourth District, Honorable Virginal G. Biron. Fifth District, Honorable Raúl Boboy C. Tupas. City of Iloilo, Loan District, Honorable Julian Jam Buran Baronda. Region 7 Central Visayas, Bohol, First District, Honorable Edgar M. Chato. Second District, Honorable Maria Vanessa C. Aumentado. Third District, Honorable Christine Alexi B. Chutor. Cebu, First District, Honorable Rea May C. A. Gulyas. Second District, Honorable Edsel A. Galaeos. Third District, Honorable Pablo John F. Garcia. Fourth District, Honorable Janice D. Talimbangan. Fifth District, Honorable Vincent Franco Duke D. Frasco. Sixth District, Honorable Daphne A. Lagon. Seventh District, Honorable Peter John D. Calderón. City of Cebu, First District, Honorable Rachel Margarit B. Delmore. Second District, Honorable Eduardo R. Rama. City of Lapulapu, Loan District, Honorable Maria Cynthia K. Cham. City of Mandawe, Loan District, Honorable Emery Lollipop Owano Dizon. Region 8 Eastern Visayas, Viliran, Loan District, Honorable Gerardo Jerry Boy J. Espina Jr. Eastern Samar, Loan District, Honorable Maria Fair R. Abunda. Leyte, First District, Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes. Second District, Honorable Lolita T. Javier. Third District, Honorable Anna Victoria Veloso Tawazon. Fourth District, Honorable Richard I. Gómez D.P.A. Fourth District, Honorable Carl Nicolas C. Kyri. Northern Samar, First District, Honorable Paul Ruiz Daza. Second District, Honorable Harris Christopher M. Hongchuwan. Samar, First District, Honorable Stephen James T. Tan. Second District, Honorable Reynolds Michael T. Tan. Southern Leyte, First District, Honorable Luz V. Mercado. Second District, Honorable Christopher Son Poco M. Yap. Region 9 Sambuanga Peninsula, Sambuanga del Norte, First District, Honorable Roberto T. Uy Jr. Second District, Honorable Glona G. Labadlabad. Third District, Honorable Adrian Michael A. Amatong. Sambuanga del Sur, First District, Honorable Divina Grace C.U. Second District, Honorable Jaisal Victoria C.U. City of Sambuanga, First District, Honorable Kimir Adan T. Olaso. Second District, Honorable Manuel Jose Manix M. Dalipe. Sambuanga Cibugay, First District, Honorable Wilter Y. Palma. Second District, Honorable Antonietta R. Udella. Region 10 Northern Mindanao Bukidnon, First District, Honorable Se Manuel F. Alba. Second District, Honorable Jonathan Keith T. Flores. Third District, Honorable Se Maria R. Zubiri Jr. Fourth District, Honorable Larni Levine Roque. Camiggin, Loan District, Honorable Jordan Jesús M. Romualdo. Lanau del Norte, First District, Honorable Muhammad Khalid Q. Dimaporo. Second District, Honorable City Amina Q. Dimaporo. City of Iligan, Loan District, Honorable Celso G. Rehencha. Misamis Occidental, First District, Honorable Jason P. Almonte. Second District, Honorable Sancho Fernando Ando F. O. Amenal. Misamis Oriental, First District, Honorable Christian S. Unabia. Second District, Honorable Jeff Ginny Vincente B. Emano. City of Cagayan de Oro, First District, Honorable Lordon G. Suwan. Second District, Honorable Rufus B. Rodriguez. Region 11, Davao Region, Davao de Oro, First District, Honorable Maria Carmen S. Zamora. Second District, Honorable Ruel Peter Gonzaga. Davao del Norte, First District, Honorable Pantallón D. Álvarez. Second District, Honorable Alan Aldu R. Duhalí. Davao de Sur, Loan District, Honorable John Tracy F. Cagas. City of Davao, First District, Honorable Paolo Z. Duterte. Second District, Honorable Vincent J. Garcia. Third District, Honorable Isidro T. Ungab. Davao Occidental, Loan District, Honorable Claude P. Bautista. Davao Oriental, First District, Honorable Nelson L. Dayanghirang. Second District, Honorable Chino Miguel D. Almario. Region 12 Socserjen Cotobato, First District, Honorable Celito Joel S. Sackdalan. Second District, Honorable Rudy S. Kawagdan D.P.A. Third District, Honorable Maria Alana Samantha T. Santos. Tarangani, Loan District, Honorable Steve Chongbian Solon. South Cotobato, First District, Honorable Isidro P. Lumayag. Second District, Honorable Peter B. Miguel. General Santo City, Loan District, Honorable Loreto B. Acharon. Sultan Kodarat, First District, Honorable Princess Rihan M. Sakaluran. Second District, Honorable Horacio P. Swan Sing Jr. Region 13 Karaga Administrative Region, Agusan del Norte, First District, Honorable Jose Joboy S. Aquino II. Second District, Honorable De B. Corvera. Agusan del Sur, First District, Honorable Alfelito Alfel M. Bascub. Second District, Honorable Edibong G. Plaza. Dinaga Island, Loan District, Alan Uno B. Ecleo. Surigao del Norte, First District, Honorable Francisco Jose Bingo F. Matugas II CPA Ceso LLB. Second District, Honorable Robert Ace S. Barberas. Surigao del Sur, First District, Honorable Romeo S. Momo Jr. Second District, Honorable Johnny T. Timintel. Coriliera Administrative Region, Abra, Loan District, Honorable Ching B. Bernos. Apayao, Loan District, Honorable Eleanor C. Bulut Biktang. Menget, Loan District, Honorable Eric Go Yap. City of Baguio, Loan District, Honorable Mark O. Go. Fugao, Loan District, Honorable Solomon R. Chungalau. Kalinga, Loan District, Honorable Alan Jesse T. Mangawang. Mountain Province, Loan District, Honorable Maximo Y. Dalog Jr. Bangsamora Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao. Basilan, Loan District, Honorable Mujiv S. Hataman. Lanau del Sur, First District, Honorable Zia Alonto Adyong. Second District, Honorable Yaser Alonto Balindong. Bagindanau del Norte, Loan District, Honorable Bai Dimple A. Mastura. Bagindanau del Sur, Loan District, Honorable Mohamed P. Paglas. Sulu, First District, Honorable Samir A. Tang. Second District, Honorable Munir N. Arbison Jr. Tawitawi, Loan District, Honorable Dimzor M. Salí. Negroes Island Region, Negroes Occidental, First District, Honorable Gerardo F. Valiamor Jr. Second District, Honorable Alfredo D. Maranyon III. Third District, Honorable Francisco Kiko B. Benitez. Fourth District, Honorable Juliet Marie de Leon Ferrer. Fifth District, Honorable Emilio Bernardino L. Yulo. Sixth District, Honorable Mercedes K. Álvarez. City of Bacola, Loan District, Honorable Greg G. Gasataya. Negroes Oriental, First District, Honorable Joseline C. Limkaychong. Second District, Honorable Manuel T. Tagarbaria. City of Hor, Loan District, Honorable Zaldi S. Villia. Partelist One Pacman, One Patriotic Coalition of Marginalized Nationals Incorporated, Honorable Michael L. Romero, Ph.D. One Rider Partelist, ang buklod na mga motorista ng Pilipinas, Honorable Bonifacio L. Bosita, Honorable Ramon Rodrigo L. Gutierrez. Four Peace, pagtibain at palaguin ang pangkabuhayang Pilipino, Honorable J.C. Abalos, Honorable Marcelino C. Libanan. Ambis Owa ang Asosasyon sang mangunguma nga bisaya Owa Mangunguma Incorporated, Honorable Lex Anthony Chris A. Colada. Abang Lingkod, Abang Lingkod Incorporated, Honorable Joseph Stephen Caraps S. Paduano, Abono, Abono Partelist, Honorable Robert Raymond M. Estrella. ACIS, Anti-Crime and Terrorism Community Involvement and Support Incorporated, Honorable Edvick G. Yap, Honorable Joseline P. Tulfo, Honorable Erwin T. Tulfo. ACT Teachers, ACT Teachers Partelist, Honorable Franz L. Castro. AGAP, Agricultural Sector Alliance of the Philippines, Honorable Nikanor M. Bionis. Agimat, Agimat na masa, Honorable Brian B. Revilia. Agri, Agriagra na reforma para sa magsasakan ng Pilipinas, Honorable Wilbert Manoy T. Lee. Ako Bicol, Ako Bicol Political Party, Honorable Ramon Angelo Gil D. Bongalon. Honorable Elizalde Esco. Ako Bisaya, Ako Bisaya Partelist, Honorable Sunny S. L. El Lagon. Ako Ilocano, Ako Honorable Rachel Singson. Alona, Alliance of Organizations, Networks, and Associations of the Philippines Incorporated, Honorable Anna Marie Villaraza Suárez. Anak Kalusugan, alagaan natin ating kalusugan, Honorable Ray T. Reyes. Ang Provinciano, aliansa na mga mamayang provinciano, Honorable Alfred C. De Los Santos. Angat, agriculture ngayon gawing akma at tama, Honorable Ronaldo S. Tamayo. APEC, Association of Philippine Electric Cooperatives, Honorable Sergio C. Dagoo. API, Abante Pangasinan Ilocano Party, Honorable Michael M. Morden. BH Bagong Generasyon, Honorable Bernadette B. H. Herrera. BHW, Barangay Health Wellness Party, Honorable Angelica Natasha Co. Bicol Saro, Honorable Brian Raymond S. Yamsuan. Cibak, Citizens' Battle Against Corruption, Honorable Eduardo Brother Eddie C. Villanueva. Coop Natco, Coop Natco Partelist, Honorable Filimon M. Espares. CWS, Construction Workers Solidarity, Honorable Edwin L. Gardiola. Dumper PTDA, Dumper Philippines Taxi Drivers Associations Incorporated, Honorable Claudine Diana D. Bautistalim. Duterte Youth, Duterte Youth Partelist, Honorable Drexime S. Cardema. Gabriela, Gabriela Women's Party, Honorable Arline D. Brosas. GP Party, Galing Sapuso Party, Honorable Jose Gay G. Padenos. Kabataan, Kabataan Partelist, Honorable Raúl Daniel A. Manuel. Kabayan, Kabalikat ng Mamayang, Honorable Ron P. Salo. Kalinga, Kalinga Advocacy for Social Empowerment and Nation Building Through Easing Poverty Incorporated, Honorable Irene Gay F. Saulog. Usug Tausug Partelist, Honorable Shurni A. Tan Tambut. LPGMA, LPG Marketers Association Incorporated, Honorable Alan U. T. Malasakit at Bayanihan, Malasakit Bayanihan Foundation Incorporated, Honorable Anthony Rolando T. Gólez Jr. Manila Teachers, Manila Teacher Savings and Loan Association Incorporated, Honorable Virhilio S. Lacson. Marino, Marino Samahan na mga semen Incorporated, Honorable Sandro L. Gonzalez. OFW, One Filipinos Worldwide Coalition Partelist, Honorable Marisa Delmar Magcino. PATROL, Public Safety Alliance for Transformation and Rule of Law Incorporated, Honorable Jorge Patrol Bustos. EBA Personam Bayaning Atleta, Honorable Margarita Attorney Miggs V. Nograles. Pilrika, Philippine Rural Electric Cooperatives Association Incorporated, Honorable Presley C. Jesus. Pinuno, pinatatag na ugnayan para sa mga oportunidad sa pabahay ng masa. Honorable Ivan Honorable Ivan Howard A. Ginto Provinciano ako, Honorable Rudy Caesar G. Farinez I. Usung Pinoy, Honorable Journey Jet V. Nisay Sagip, Social Amelioration and Genuine Intervention on Poverty Honorable Radante D. Marcoletta Honorable Caroline L. Tansay Senior Citizens Partilist, Coalition of Senior Citizens in the Philippines Incorporated Honorable, Honorable Rodolfo Ompong M. Ordanes T.G.P., Talinot Galing ng Pinoy Honorable Jose Bong J. Tevez Jr. Tingok Sinirangan, Honorable Yeda Marie K. Romualdes Honorable Jude A. Asidre TUCP, Trade Union Congress Party Honorable Raymond Democritos C. Mendoza Tutoktwin, Honorable Samuel S. Versosa Jr. United Senior Citizens, United Senior Citizens Coalition ng Pilipinas Incorporated Honorable Milagros Aquino Magzaysay Uswag Ilongo, Uswag Ilongo Party Honorable James Jojo Ang Jr.
Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that 262 members responded to the call.
There being 262 members responding to the call, the Chair declares the presence of a quorum. The Majority Leader is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I move to consider House Resolution Number 1799 and for this purpose, direct the Secretary General to read the title and text of the resolution.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Consideration of House Resolution 1799 is now in order. The Secretary General is directed to read the title and the text of the resolution.
House Resolution Number 1799. Resolution informing the Senate that the quorum being present, the House of Representatives has entered upon the exercise of its functions. Resolved as it is hereby resolved by the House of Representatives that the Senate be informed that the quorum being present, the House of Representatives has entered upon the exercise of its functions. Adopted, signed Manuel Jose Manix M. Dalipe, Majority Leader, and Marcelino C. Libanan, Minority Leader.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to adopt House Resolution Number 1799.
There is a motion to adopt House Resolution Number 1799. Those in favor say "Aye."
Aye.
Those against say "Nay." The ayes have it. House Resolution Number 1799 is adopted. The Majority Leader is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I move to consider House Resolution Number 1800 and for this purpose, direct the Secretary General to read the title and text of the resolution.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Consideration of House Resolution Number 1800 is now in order. The Secretary General is directed to read the title and text of the resolution.
House Resolution Number 1800. Resolution informing His Excellency Ferdinand Romualdes Marcos Jr., President of the Republic of the Philippines, that the House of Representatives has entered upon the exercise of its functions. Resolved as it is hereby resolved by the House of Representatives that His Excellency Ferdinand Romualdes Marcos Jr., President of the Republic of the Philippines, be informed that the House of Representatives has entered upon the exercise of its functions. Adopted, signed Manuel Jose Manix M. Dalipe, Majority Leader, and Marcelino C. Libanan, Minority Leader.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to adopt House Resolution Number 1800.
There is a motion to adopt House Resolution Number 1800. Those in favor say "Aye."
Aye.
Those against say "Nay." The ayes have it. House Resolution Number 1800 is adopted. The Majority Leader is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I move to consider House Concurrent Resolution Number 27 and for this purpose, direct the Secretary General to read the title and text of the concurrent resolution.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Consideration of House Concurrent Resolution Number 27 is now in order. The Secretary General is directed to read the title and the text of the concurrent resolution.
House Concurrent Resolution Number 27. Concurrent Resolution providing for the Senate and the House of Representatives to hold the joint session to hear the message of the President of the Republic of the Philippines. Resolved by the House of Representatives, the Senate concurring that both Houses of Congress of the Republic of the Philippines hold the joint session on Monday, July 22, year 2024, at 4 o'clock in the afternoon at the session hall of the House of Representatives to hear the message of the President of the Republic of the Philippines. Adopted, signed Manuel Jose Manix M. Dalipe, Majority Leader, and Marcelino C. Libanan, Minority Leader.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to adopt House Concurrent Resolution Number 27.
There is a motion to adopt House Concurrent Resolution Number 27. Those in favor say "Aye."
Aye.
Those against say "Nay." The ayes have it. House Concurrent Resolution Number 27 is adopted. The Majority Leader is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, in order to give the House Secretariat time to transmit to the Senate the copies of the resolutions we just have adopted and until we have received messages from the Senate on the resolutions they have adopted, I move to suspend the session.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The session is suspended. The session is resumed. The Honorable Majority Leader is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, we are in receipt of the messages from the Senate. I move to consider the same and direct the Secretary General to read the messages.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, consideration of messages from the Senate is now in order. The Secretary General is directed to read the messages from the Senate.
Senate Resolution Number 1061 entitled: "Resolution Informing the House of Representatives that the quorum is present in the Senate and that this body has entered upon the exercise of its functions for the third regular session of the 19th Congress of the Philippines." Senate Resolution Number 1062 entitled: "Resolution Informing President Ferdinand R. Marcos Jr. that the quorum is present in the Senate and that the body has entered upon the exercise of its functions for the third regular session of the 19th Congress of the Philippines."
To the archives.
Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 19 entitled: "Concurrent Resolution Creating a Joint Committee of the Senate and the House of Representatives to notify the President of the Philippines that Congress now convened for its third regular session of the 19th Congress of the Philippines is hereby is ready to hear his State of the Nation address in a joint session of both Houses."
To the calendar of business for the day. The Majority Leader is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I move to consider Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 19 and for this purpose, direct the Secretary General to read the title and text of the concurrent resolution.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Consideration of Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 19 is now in order. The Secretary General is directed to read the title and text of the concurrent resolution.
Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 19. Concurrent Resolution Creating a Joint Committee of the Senate and the House of Representatives to notify the President of the Philippines that Congress now convened for its third regular session of the 19th Congress of the Philippines is ready to hear his State of the Nation address in a joint session of both Houses. Resolved by the Senate, the House of Representatives concurring that a committee of five members led by the Senate President join a committee of House of Representatives to notify the President of the Philippines that Congress now convened for its third regular session of the 19th Congress of the Philippines is ready to hear his State of the Nation address in a joint session of both Houses. Adopted, signed Francis Toll N. Tolentino, Senator.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the adoption of Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 19.
There is a motion to adopt Senate Concurrent Resolution 19. Those in favor say "Aye."
Aye.
Those against say "Nay." The ayes have it. Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 19 is adopted. The Majority Leader is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, in view of the adoption of Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 19, authorizing the creation of a joint committee of both Houses to notify the President of the Philippines that Congress is convened and ready to hear his message. On the part of the House, I move that the following be appointed to the joint committee: Honorable Aurelio Dong D. Gonzalez Jr. Honorable Yasser Alonto Balindong Honorable Roberto V. Puno Honorable Christine Singson Mihan Honorable Camille A. Villar Honorable Raymond de Morocuito C. Mendoza Honorable David J.J. C. Suarez Honorable Vincent Franco Duke Frasco Honorable Antonio Tony Pet Albano.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The members of the House of Representatives so named are hereby appointed to the joint committee and are requested to immediately discharge their responsibility. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, in order to give the members of the joint committee time to perform their assigned task and until the House counterpart is ready to report back their accomplishments to this House, I move to suspend session.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The session suspended. The session is resumed. The Honorable Majority Leader is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, we have received a report from the Notification Committee that the President has been informed that Congress will convene in joint session at 4 o'clock this afternoon to hear his State of the Nation address. Mr. Speaker, we wish to remind the members of this chamber that all of us must be here an hour before the joint session at 4 o'clock.
The remarks of the Majority Leader are duly noted. Mr. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, to give way to the joint session at 4 o'clock this afternoon, I move to suspend session until tomorrow, July 23, 2024, at 3 o'clock in the afternoon.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The session is suspended until tomorrow, July 23, 2024, at 3 o'clock in the afternoon.
May we call on the Deputy Speakers to come to the podium. Minority Leader and Majority Leader. Uh, please... Please come to the podium.